Welcome, everyone. I call the June 26 City Council meeting to order. This meeting was rescheduled from June 20 due to a city-related conference that myself and several of our council members had attended. Councilmember Martz has an excused absence this evening. As a reminder, we continue to use remote aspect to our meetings. Both staff and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. First item on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we have one item on our agenda this evening under Special Business. It is ID 1472, and it is the Cougar Mountain Zoo Week proclamation. Jared Munzer, the Director of Cougar Mountain Zoo, will be joining me out here to receive the proclamation. We don't usually get to have this much fun. Welcome, Jared and Lilly. Very exciting this week. I think it was a couple of weeks ago I got to renew my membership at Cougar Mountain Zoo, and two grandmas now are able to take grandbaby for another year, and he loves it up there. Whereas the Cougar Mountain Zoo is an 11-acre zoological park located in Issaquah, which receives the majority of its funding through grassroots efforts of the Zoological Society of Washington. And whereas the Zoological Society of Washington and the Cougar Mountain Zoo were dedicated to increasing the understanding and appreciation of the earth's wildlife and the role of humanity in nature through education, exhibition, conservation, captive breeding, and recreation. Whereas the Cougar Mountain Zoo has served as a living classroom for 50 years, making educational programs available to over 10,000 schoolchildren. And whereas the Cougar Mountain Zoo has the largest, most unique holiday pageant in the northwest, Santa's Reindeer Farm attracts more than 15,000 visitors to Issaquah during the month of December. And whereas the Cougar Mountain Zoo is the single largest non-competitive tourist attraction on the east side, attracting over 100,000 visitors to Issaquah each year. And whereas the zoo is loved by all segments of our population, regardless of age, socioeconomic level, ethnic or denominational background. And whereas the Cougar Mountain Zoo is celebrating its 50th anniversary this summer. And whereas the zoo is designated as an official Issaquah treasure. Now therefore, I, Mary Lou Pollard, Polly, Mayor of the City of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim the week of July 2 to 6 to be Cougar Mountain Zoo Week in the City of Issaquah, and I invite all community members and businesses to support the zoo and recognize the impact the zoological park has made on our community. Are you able to talk or no? So I think we'll just take a picture together, and am I allowed to come closer to you? Okay. Can you go this way? Okay.
Yeah, that'll work. It'll be good, I hope.
Jared? That's awesome. You don't need to shake hands. No!
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And clapping. Okay. Thank you, Jared. That was wonderful. Doesn't like my voice. Too much fun. So like I said, that does not happen very often. We have no more items of special business this evening. We're going to move into Audience Comments, and this is the time that members of the public may address the council in person or virtually. And those who have signed up in advance to make comments will be called upon first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send our host a chat message. If you're on the phone, you can press star 3, and if you join by computer or smartphone, please look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and you did not sign out, do not worry. I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. There will also be a public hearing tonight on AB 8640, the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Comments on this item should be made, must be made, under the public hearing occurring later in the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for General Audience Comments this evening?
Yes.
Thanks. So for those that are making comments, please make sure to direct your comments to the whole council and not to individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. So when you are recognized virtually, unmute your microphone. If you're in the room, please step up to the lectern in front of council, state your name, address, and relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and please limit your comments to five minutes. If you are attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed, and you are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted. Resident comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process, and the city takes comments seriously. We thank you all for taking the time to address us this evening. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Yes, Brian Runberg.
And Brian, there's a button on the microphone itself. There you go.
Thank you. I'm Brian Runberg. I am with the ownership group of the former Red Robin in Pickering Place, and appreciate the audience. I'll try and get through this in five minutes. Essentially, what we'd like to do is this is a bit of a recap from the last meeting from May 22, and what's going to come up, I guess, on the August 9 meeting discussing the Pioneer Program. Our group is seeking ways that we can create some housing, innovative housing, for the area within the UC. And just to recap, the incentivized Pioneer Program should be within an area that is currently not have development of this type occurring and intended to compensate for the added risk of development. It could be limited to area or time permitted and jumpstart the markets to provide what the community desires. So I think what you got in your staff report from that May 22 meeting, I just want to recap those seven things quickly. Needing be first in the area, which we are, obviously has a high water table, there's the need for the MFTE, which is the multifamily tax exemption program, which we would sincerely like to ask for. The other comment was that there's levels below the 80% AMI is challenging for financing and cost of land, and yes, all the comparisons that we have and have done, and certainly can approach you on the August 9 meeting, are all within the 80% AMI without some other kind of subsidies. Those typically don't happen. And the other number five comment there was that the development cost is the same here, but the rents are a dollar or less. So that's what that represents for the development group is somewhere between 25 and 30% less revenue that we're trying to compensate for here. And the other comment that came from that staff report was that being the highest impact fees in the region, I can attest to that. We haven't dove into that deeply, but we are seeing other jurisdictions because of this need for housing to propose some interim legislation to give some relief to that and remove some other barriers. And number seven was predictability and answers early in the discussion, and the answer to that is yes, we really do need that. For example, we had thought in going in and purchasing the property that the Pioneer Program was already in place, because it is in the CIP, and it is defined in there. So we're stepping through this process, but we've lost some significant time in the past year. And the vicinity map shown there in your packet, and there's some slides here. We are right smack in the center of this. I know this is very much in the need for the housing, and we want to fulfill that density goals of that. And the next slide, I kind of want to step through this as quickly as possible. There were some key comments that came back from you that we want to explore further, and we will come back on August 9. First comment was, would rather take the feedback and make the code change. If the code changes, it's going to take over a year or more, I guess. That would be too late for us. We're going to need to move on with something else. More data on successful, see what moves the needle was another comment. These are paraphrased, by the way. And yes, we do have more data points for you. Another comment was, support the idea of the Pioneer Program, want to dig in deeper. We will come back with you on that. Another comment was, continue to pursue the program. We should use this as an opportunity to get the first sort of these projects and get in the specific code changes and learn from that. And there was a very specific comment, number six, about some innovative stuff for very small apartments, for example. It can truly be innovative. Our group, we're industry leaders in this housing. We're industry or nation industries in the energy side as well as design, so we can come out and provide something back and have some ideas in the packet there that we can share with you. So again, we'll come back with you when there's more time, but on that August 9, we can be collaborative and transparent about this. And the next slide on our request. So yes, we are the first in the area, from what I understand by the comp plan, there's 6,100 apartment units that were targeted for this area by 2032. For example, if we provide 275 units, that's not going to hit the market for another five years. There's two years entitlements and three years of building. So I don't know how you're going to get the other 5,800 units within a four-year period, but that's a huge surge. We're just trying to get out in front of this and do what we can, and we need a little help. So that was a key one. And then just touching on these other things, again, all we want to ask for is what's comparable in the other markets. We've got six projects in the East Link Line. All of them have MFTE, all of them are in 80% AMI to make these work. It does provide, at least on our data, 28 affordable units. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for sending the material in ahead of time. City Clerk, do we have anyone online or anyone else signed up?
Mayor, no one else has signed up in advance to speak under General Audience Comments. We have a few folks in the audience wishing to speak on the public hearing, and I see we have one virtual attendee, but they are not indicating a desire to speak.
I'll just double-check again, making sure those that are here to testify in the room are here to testify in the Capital Improvement Plan, and that will be at a later time. Okay, thank you. So we had one individual speak to us during Audience Comments today about the Pioneer Project Program. And as a reminder to anyone watching, you can always submit written comments at any time to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. The next item of business is the Consent Calendar. I did not have any comments to add on tonight's consent calendar, but I did want to check if there were any committee chairs. Okay, and I am seeing Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Yes, so on consents tonight, there is AB 8618, which is amendments to Title 18 regarding diversity of housing. And this was reviewed by the Planning, Development, and Environment Committee on June 6. And since I haven't yet reported out on that, I wanted to let council know about that conversation. So these amendments focus on the market rate rental and ownership part of the housing spectrum. And these code amendments were work that came out of the Housing Action Plan Grant or HAPPY Grant. And the code amendments focus on cottage housing, courtyard housing, and micro units. The committee discussed these code changes, and we were thankful for the work that the Commission and the staff had done on this. We also wanted to be sure to follow up with more recommendations that came out of the HAPPY Grant, because all of these code changes clarify types of housing that were actually already allowed in the code. And so it's an important clarification, but we also felt like we likely need to do more to get this diversity of housing that we're striving for. So we want to make sure to revisit this after the 2024 parking analysis is complete, which is the current plan, but also to recognize that we do need to continue to take actions in our code to make sure that we get this diversity of housing. But this was an important step, and we recommended this beyond consent this evening for council's approval.
Thank you. Any other chairs that want to provide some comments on any items on the consent calendar? Not seeing any. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That passes unanimously, 6-0. So we're going to move into the public hearing portion of our meeting. This is AB 8640, the 2024-2029 Capital Improvement Plan. Before council this evening, we will be conducting the public hearing and requesting the approval of a resolution. The item was last discussed by the City Council at the June 12 Special City Council Meeting and Committee of the Whole Meeting. Tonight, we will reopen the continued public hearing and request your adoption of the Capital Improvement Plan. I'd like to invite Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Pleasure to be with you tonight. I also have with me Susie Mansell, our Budget Manager, who's here to help assist, and we have a number of staff here and online as well to answer any questions you may have, including Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling and Emily Moon, Public Works Director. So tonight is a follow-up from our discussion from the previous council meeting. And as council may recall, we've had a long process for us to get here. So we're in the final deliberations, and we request council adoption this evening. We started this process way back in January, where we looked at criteria. We talked with our boards and commissions about these criteria and the draft CIP, all leading us here for this evening. There are a couple of follow-up items that we wanted to include in the presentation and are in your packet for this evening from the June 12 Committee of the Whole. Those items include the CIP project inclusion history. This was a request in response to the question about the longstanding commitment criterion. We had asked if council felt as if the CIP reflected the desire to uphold commitments that council may have made to the community in the past. We heard from council that said, yes, pretty much, we think that this does, but we really want to see a list of projects that maybe have been dropped off from previous CIPs to this proposed CIP, just to make sure that that's the case. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. And we're also following up on some of the questions and feedback we heard on the City Hall projects, including the Issaquah Police Department and Municipal Court Project, as well as the other City Hall offices. We also have information to present tonight about the Eck House in Confluence Park, more project information and the changes we've made there in this proposed CIP. Squawk Mountain Multimodal Process and Timing. We heard some questions in making sure that we were clear on the timing for that project, and also that we had subscribed funding for that project within the CIP. And then we also had some public comments and questions about trolley detection equipment that we wanted to follow up this evening as well. And so projects omitted from the 2024 to 2029 CIP that were in other CIPs, in your packet, there's a much more extensive list of projects. We actually looked back to the best of our ability over the past 10 years to try to really cover all of our grounds and what projects may have been included in other CIPs that are not in this proposed CIP, projects that we have not yet completed. So that information is in your packet. These projects here, these two projects, the Summit Reservoirs retrofit and the park building expansion, were just the two projects that were not included over the past two CIPs, which was a specific council request. So it's really just those two projects, and they were omitted for different reasons, which resulted in them generally scoring lower than some of the other projects.
Andrea, do you want to take some questions as you go?
Great. Really appreciated having the list of projects and the inclusion and all of that. The one that I did notice was PK 008, which is the Bike Skills Element Park, which was included in three past CIPs and is in the future years for this CIP. Is there any reason why for that or any explanation there?
Yes, I think it's largely because of staff capacity and what we have the ability to do. I think what we tried to include were, if it's in the future years, it's still in the CIP. We haven't forgotten. It hasn't dropped off of our list of things that we want to do, but it may not necessarily be planned for the next six years as we've proposed. So we didn't include projects on the dropped-off list or projects that were omitted that were still in the CIP, just might be in the future years.
So to clarify, this in a previous CIP was a project intended for 2024, and now this CIP is proposing that it be somewhere after 2027, '29?
After 2029. That's correct. And I don't know if Director Watling wants to add any more information about why that is the case. Jeff, if you're able to join in.
I do. I apologize, everyone. My video's not working, but can you hear me? Can you hear my audio?
We can hear you.
Great. Great question. Thanks, Andrea. Yes, so that project, you may recall, had a potential location identified from prior conversations with Issaquah Highlands Association that was to use some space underneath the Bonneville Power Lines. You may recall recently, Bonneville Power took over maintenance and management of that power line again from Puget Sound Energy, as we as staff have worked closely with Bonneville. We have felt like that location would not be ideal for a Bike Skills Park. We still think this is a very important priority, have worked with the developer group of Issaquah Highlands to keep our commitment, but we think some important community outreach is needed to identify a new location within that neighborhood.
Not seeing any other questions. Go ahead, Andrea.
Great. Then we heard feedback around the public safety-related facilities. What we've done in response to that feedback that's in the proposed CIP tonight is we've broken out that project into two. There's one project, FC 50, that addresses police and court facility needs, and another project, FC 51, that speaks to specifically the City Hall administration-type facilities. And so that is in your packet, those two project pages. We've also updated the timeline on those project pages per council's request. And those City Hall projects include both Option A and Option B, that information is all included in the project pages. Then we also heard feedback on the Eck House, which we've split into two phases as two different projects. The first is Phase 1, or PK 10, that addresses the plaza, shelter, and outdoor spaces around the Eck House. We would be completing the design for the plaza, shelter, and outdoor spaces, looking at permitting in 2023, construction in 2024, and we would be completing this phase with the ARPA funds and current budget. Then we have Phase 2, the actual Eck House restoration, that would include the initial design in 2023 for the Eck House restoration as an active public space. And the design work would help shape the grant strategy, including timing of landmarking. Would be meeting with the King County Landmark Commission later in 2023 with a more informed design to get their feedback. And finally, have an informed policy discussion in Q1 of 2024 about landmarking, pros and cons, fundraising, and project timing. A bit of an illustration, so you can help visualize what this looks like. This diagram outlines that first and second phase. PK 10 shows the plaza and the shelter that were being proposed. And then PK 11 outlined here as well shows the Eck House and where they are in relation to each other. Another example here to visualize, you can see the plaza and the shelter in relation to the gardening plots in the Eck House, et cetera. Next, an update on Squawk Mountain Multimodal. This is, we do have assigned funding for this project, anticipated in the CIP, so that's been identified. I'm going to run through our timeline as we see it. First, we've entered into the contract as of last month for help with design. We do feel like this project is going to require a good amount of community engagement. We talked about that a little bit in the council retreat. There was a field trip that we did, and we talked about that project a little bit. So we anticipate some listening and some learning now through December, getting public input on goals and existing conditions. Then we look at alternatives development from July through December of 2023. Step 3 is presenting those alternatives for design between December of 2023 and April in 2024. Again, we really think that there's going to be a good amount of community engagement we want to do with the neighborhoods and the properties that will likely be impacted or adjacent to these improvements. And then the report, we anticipate April or September 2024, and then looking for approval for that design in September of 2024. So that's going to include its own series of outreach, as well as we finalize that design and what those preferred alternatives are. So here is, again, the highlight of what we anticipate those costs to be for additional design in 2026 and construction. We do anticipate taking some improvements project by project and not attempting to do this all at once, partially due to the impacts that we think it would have on the neighborhood and just trying to make sure that we are breaking up the project into achievable pieces and phases, so we can do improvements as we go. And again, the project is anticipated to be funded through 2029 by the School Zone Safety Fund.
Question for you.
Thank you. In the message from the mayor that's with the CIP, it still does say that this project, Squawk Mountain Multimodal Improvement, is under the 0.1%, the proposed 0.1% sales tax. And so I'm wondering if it's proposed to also be from the sales tax as well as the School Zone Safety Fund or...
So I'm sorry, I believe that's a mistake. We do anticipate the School Zone Safety Fund to help pay for this project.
To fully fund this project.
Through 2029.
And we'd be able to clarify that in the Council President's letter?
Yes.
Mayor's letter, just.
I don't know that my letter changes. I think the Council President's letter correct.
Oh.
We'll figure it out. Figure it out.
Do you have... So it is not out of the realm of possibility that the 0.1% TBD sales tax could fund a portion of this project down the road once we get to 2029, and I believe that's why it's still included in that as an example of the type of projects that could be funded by that, but outside of the six-year window of this CIP.
Okay. I think that would be good to clarify, because it does call it out as a project that would be funded by the sales tax. And my main concern is that we have funding identified. However, I do think for clarity and for people reviewing this, it would be good to have that either a correction, if that's possible, or the President's letter.
Go ahead, Andrea.
Thank you. So trolley detection equipment, we heard some comments about this and some concerns that it was not included in the CIP. The city acknowledges we own responsibility for the detection infrastructure. It's something that we've paid for in the past, and we plan to do that as well in the future. It's not in the proposed CIP, in part because it's below the $50,000 threshold for a CIP project. So we can consider it for the mid-biennium budget update this summer and in future budget discussions as well if needed. So, next steps. Again, we're asking for council adoption this evening. Following adoption, the Council President Letter to provide any additional comments or clarification as council chooses on the CIP. We would then... council chooses on the CIP, we would then update and publish. We also look forward to continuing some of our discussions that started during this process, including on July 17th, we've proposed that meeting to follow up on transportation project funding, specifically the proposed 0.1% sales tax and what those next steps would be. We'd seek additional direction from council on how to proceed there. Also, at the July 24 regular city council meeting, we will be discussing budget priorities. We've been talking about the CIP as a planning document, not a budget document. So we'd be looking at if council would like to change or make any adjustments based on the CIP process to the 2024 budget. And then September 11th, at the Committee of the Whole, we would again revisit the conversation on the police department offices, municipal court and city hall facilities and also how to fund those as well. So we'd be turning to council in September for that discussion. And at this time, ask if there's any additional questions.
Not seeing any additional questions at this time. So we can now open the public hearing at 7:31 PM. And again, if you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. If you're on the phone, press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, look for a hand icon. If you're in the room and you did not sign up, I will ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. And so city clerk, has anyone signed up or indicated desired speak?
Yes, and just to clarify, this is reopening, which I should have.
Reopening.
Reopening the public hearing that was started on June 12th. And yes, we have two individuals signed up to speak here in the room, the first being Mandy Montano.
Little red button. Yeah, there we go. Thanks.
All right. Hello, my name, council, thank you for having a public hearing for us. My name is Mandy Montano. I live at two, do I have to say my whole address? 24705 Southeast 56th Street, Isaguac 98029. We're on the backside of Black Nugget. And again, Mandy Montano, I'm an active member of the Executive Board of Isaguac Little League. I'm both the secretary and the player's agent. I'm here to provide public comment in support of the current CIP, including projects for Central Park Plat 2, which is PK 36, Veterans Memorial, PK 41, and Tibbetts Valley, PK 42. Specifically supporting the enhancement of the current baseball and softball facilities to make these facilities more accessible and inclusive for all players of all abilities and all ages. Our current membership includes close to 1,000 participants in softball, baseball, junior umpires, and challenger program serving the disability community. We partner with this, our school district programs and neighboring communities to run an inclusive and competitive program. The Isaguac community is known for a high quality of our youth athletes and a dedicated, dedicated community throughout the district and the state. So we are notorious in several different ways. Last year, we set a district and state record with five out of our six of our under, our lower age divisions for All-Stars as district champions. And our softball majors made it to the World Series. So we made it to the world stage. Unfortunately, many of our fields and facilities do not support an inclusive and accessible experience for all. For example, during spring season, we have saturated fields, limited softball-able fields, which means we can't have mounds for softball players. We have to have circles. Inadequate access for older players and tight dugouts for, that are not accessible for wheelchair-able players. A lot of our disability community actually play in some mammoth. That's really important to us. And when I say older ages, we do have a field limitation for those older players and we have very limited fields for those folks. We do have some year leagues that play on the field too. We support them as well. And so we're, we're happy to say that they're part of our baseball community. Our fields go underutilized during the fall and winter season because of the conditions of the facility. Our current facility portfolio is also unappealing for competitive tournaments due to conditions. This is a potential source of income, not only for parks and recreation, but the community as a whole. These tournaments are big. They service multiple teams. They bring folks into our community. They spend for lunches and dinners and entertainment and parking and you name it. They really, families are really dedicated. If you look at what youth sports spends from a marketing perspective, it's really super high. We're, I hate to say it, the sports community, we're addicted and we will spend a lot of money on our kids to make sure they have an amazing experience. I mean pizza alone, you name it. It's a, it's a big one. And so by having these multiple fields across the board, we can go ahead and we can encourage other players to come into our community and really engage. And then also, we have a lot of competition. The north and south communities are spending tons of money to bring up their fields to the standards where you can play in Washington weather. Believe it or not, people play baseball, fall, winter, spring and summer. If you have the fields to do it, they will play it. But we do not here. Unfortunately, we do not. We do have one set of fields that is appealing and that's the field that we actually sponsor. The Isaguac Little League built out Dodd Field in partnership with the Isaguac School District. We maintain it. We mow it. We staff it. Everything that we do on that field is all from the Isaguac Little League. So that is one of our top fields. When people are looking, District Nine, we just did competitions for the All-Stars and they ran out of fields. They came looking to us because they knew that we had an in with our field and we were able to do that and provide it with our softball community. And the whole district came here to play. So when we look at that competition, we want to bring that competition here. We want to be that community. We're right on I-90. You don't have to fight for it or anything. So it's really important. But more importantly is the element of equal experience for all levels of play. Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Again, it's in support of the plan.
Thank you, Mandy. City clerk, who else has signed up?
Victor Bello.
Hello, mayor. Council members, I come to you today to bring up a noticeable omission to the CIP, which is the Isaguahobart Road. I live in, on 1105 Lewis Lane, which is just off that road. And ever since May, our company is requiring us to come back to the office three times a week at least. So I've experienced firsthand how terrible the traffic is all the way from the 90 down there. And seeing how there was no mention of this problem or ways to improve this artery in the, in the CIP disappointed me to the least, right? I think that there is a great, other things in the, in the CIP, great growth for our city, outstanding development, but there are real problems that are going to continue to grow if we don't rein those in. So I request the council to look into ways of how can we improve this, this road because it will continue to be more and more of a problem as we progress. And right now, we're in a little bit of a, of a good time because school's out. So we don't have the problem with the, all the buses, school buses. My kids walk to school, so I don't mind that, but other people do. And I just urge you to consider, if not possible for this one, because we're close to closing this out, but start requesting administration to look into ways of enabling better traffic easement in the, on that road. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Is there anyone else just signed up to speak? Steve, would you like to come up and talk to the council? I think you're next.
Hello, Steve Perera, old town for about 14 years. So I don't want to repeat what I've already sent in, so I'll save that piece. Two thoughts, I guess, occurred to me. One is that it seems to be already, I guess, two thoughts. One is the CIP bakes into its presumption that there's going to be at least two additional revenue sources that haven't yet come up. So it already seemed, on top of that, already seems like a pretty tight budget. And we're looking at possibly having to take things out that we've already put in. And that seems kind of backwards. I don't think, I think the other thought, another thought is that the priorities, at least from my standpoint, seem hard to understand as far as reading the boxes, number of boxes that are green, number that are yellow and the red and figure out what the actual priority is. So I don't think we really prioritized it very well. I think I looked at a couple of documents. I guess I'll say my last thought. I looked at a couple of documents online, just because I found it online doesn't mean that it's true. One was that the Isaguac voted on September 2nd, 2014 to become Regional Growth Center. And a lot of talk that I heard at that time, I don't know which of you were up in the dais at the time or who was or who wasn't, but we look at it. That the big thought I heard of this selling component was we're going to have this green necklace. And we've kind of lost the track that where the green necklace is, are we going to fund it? It seems to be pushed out further and further and further. Not happening. We've talked about parks, we talked about dog parks, we talked about a lot of things. And I, we need to grow the city that we want to become, but we haven't really prioritized. We've kind of seemed to me to have lost focus on what that priority is and what the priority should be. So I'm asking you to kind of show me that, that community input of what that priority is, what that vision is, what helps us get there. I'm, in order to make that, those things a priority, there are things I think that in the current CIP need to be taken out before we spend the money on them to make the things a priority. Again, not trying to repeat my wish list, but I think we need to look at it and maintain what that vision is because we're losing that track and focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'm not seeing anybody else in the room that hasn't had an opportunity to speak. Is there anybody online that has indicated a desire to speak?
Mayor, we have one member of the public online, but I don't see them indicating a desire to speak.
Okay, well, thank you very much. If there is no objection, then I will be closing the public hearing at 7:42. Is there a council member ready to make a motion?
Okay. I move to approve resolution number 2023 dash.
11.
11, adopting the capital improvement plan for 2024 to 2029, including the six-year transportation improvement program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional council discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Actually, I have a question. I wasn't quite fast enough before. On the Eck House, thank you for providing the additional information. I, my concern is that the timeline has moved, has moved out because we are looking at different ways to restore this building and different uses compared to the initial first thoughts about how we could use ARPA funding to, to restore the Eck House. And so my concern is the state of the building right now and, and it being that way for longer than I had at least initially anticipated. So I'm wondering, and I, I recently went there, I took pictures, I'm happy to share, but the building is exposed to the elements. There's open floorboards and there's visible black fire damage. And it's right by a playground. So I am wondering if we can do something to protect the building. We're planning on, on having this be a public amenity. I'm wondering if we can do something to make sure that we protect it and also just make sure that we're, as a, as the owners of this public asset, make sure that we're taking care of it. It really, to me, doesn't look like we are right now. So I think that, that's, that's my question. Can we do something? And maybe this is a budget conversation, but can we do something to take care of this building in the interim while we figure out whether we're landmarking it and these other conversations that are going on about the long-term future of the building?
Thank you for the question. I'm wondering if Jeff Watling can provide more information. I know an assessment was done earlier this year on the structure as well. So he probably has a few more details he can provide. Director Watling?
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. Thanks, Councilmember Hunt. Great question. Yeah, so with this sort of two-phased approach, absolutely with Phase One and focusing on the, the plaza and the shelter space behind the Eck House, we're also looking at doing some of the cosmetic work as well as just some of the protecting the asset work while we continue to, to wrap up design of, of the Eck House and, and seek grant funding for the actual restoration. So your question and, and comment's a really, really good one. And we shared a similar thought that, that we need to do some of the, the cosmetic work of cleaning up the fire damage and then as well, at least best securing and insulating the, the house in its current state.
What is the expected timeline on the first round of improvements, the cosmetic and the weather protection improvement?
Well, that will be as we are doing the Phase One work, which is going to be design and permitting this year and construction next year.
Okay, so at this, some, at some point in this calendar year?
At, at some point as we're doing that first phase of work, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Director Watling, I know when the fire occurred, there was some measures that facilities took to prevent degradation of the building. Are you familiar with that? They were not meant to repair the building, but they were meant to help with degradation. And I don't think you've mentioned that yet.
No, thank you, mayor. You're absolutely right. And yes, when that fire occurred, the, the building is not in its, its post-fire state. There was, there was quite a bit of work to, to insulate the building at that time. I think to Councilmember Hunt's point, there is still, when you look at the back porch area and as we're doing the improvements behind that house as Phase One, we'll want to do some of that cosmetic work. And at that time, we again will take a look at some of the work that was done post-fire and if there's additional work that needs to be done. Again, we don't see this as being a significant budget amount, but it's something we'll do while we're doing the, the first phase.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Any additional questions on anything else? I'm going to reread the motion. If there is no further discussion, the motion, oh, sorry. Oh. Oh, sorry, I asked for discussion. So go ahead. Additional discussion?
Thank you. I guess just reflecting back on all of this. First of all, good job us for taking this on. It wasn't something that we necessarily needed to do to rethink the criteria. We could have just continued on with the same projects, but I, I think this was really important. I also want to take a moment just to thank the boards and commissions for all of their great feedback because it wasn't just on the projects themselves, but also the project, the, the process and the criteria. And I think that was really, really powerful. I think keeping them involved in this process in future years early on is something I'm going to look forward to seeing. As we look at this next element of the CIP, I do want to really echo, and I'm sure I will in the council president's letter as well, but what we heard from the boards and commissions about the green, yellow, red and the criteria is they want to make sure that it is working for us. So looking ahead at a future year, getting the feedback from staff, understanding, you know, in some cases, there weren't any reds in a certain criteria or a certain element. And so really thinking about that. I also, I think, and this echoes some of what we just heard from Steve Perera about, I would like to be able to clearly understand in the future how the criteria are being used to decide whether something is near term, you know, far future term or future years. And if there's a level that makes it into a bucket. I understand that this is an art and a science, but giving a better understanding of that, that came up for me as I was looking at the Central Park Bike Skills Park and really. up for me as I was looking at the Central Park Bike Skills Park, and really understanding, oh, that was something that had been in, in previous CIPs. It was something that the community was very interested in, and to see it dropped off into future years was kind of a disappointed, disappointment for me. And then, just speaking to this CIP experience, and I would love to hear from other council members, either on the dais or afterward, I didn't feel like we had as much of an opportunity as a council to dig into individual projects or, like, the balance of projects across different areas because this went to our committees. Now, this is the first time we've had the CIP go to committees rather than study session with this most recent change, and I personally just didn't feel like we had as much of a comprehensive view of the CIP. Part of that was because we were so much focused on the criteria and the rethinking, but I would be curious for my fellow council members if there are any thoughts on that, that I might include with the Council President letter. So, thank you.
Additional discussion? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So, one, firstly, I wanted to thank the folks that came and made public comments tonight. I think we had public comments that really clarified the impact of these projects on people's day-to-day lives, like the baseball fields, and that was, that was great. And it, these projects, there's many pages of projects here, but they do really have the potential to improve people's day-to-day lives. So, I, I'm looking forward to supporting this. I do, I wanted to comment on the stormwater projects part, because this was reviewed in our committee on June 6th, and so I haven't actually done the report out on that review, since this is our first regular meeting after that, although we had a work session. So, for the stormwater projects, supportive of alignment with the Stormwater Master Plan, and we were supportive of the process improvements, including the criteria. Also, very supportive of the funding for the Laughing Jacobs Creek Project, which is in front of Coconee, and it was noted that the projects in this section generally scored well in climate and resiliency, which we, as a committee, thought was, was good to see. And then, we also had a project, we had a conversation about how projects in the same area were planned and sequenced to make sure that if we're tearing up the roadway, for example, for one project, if there's another project that's going on around the same time, that, just to understand how all of that is coordinated and sequenced. And, and felt like that was a good conversation, and the short answer was that that's done in the work, work plan, part of the process, not necessarily in the CIP, which is the bigger picture. On the, on Council President's question about the process for the different committees reviewing different parts, I think that that works well for the deep dives in the different sections. For example, the Planning Development Environment Committee, looking at the stormwater projects. I think for a potential improvement, which you could potentially include in your letter, if my colleagues on the council agree, we could have a dedicated time in our study session when the council reconvenes to discuss the balance of the different areas, because I agree, we, we kind of did our deep dives and then reported back, and, and then, for the most part, discussed overall process. But I think that, looking at the balance, once the deep dives and the committees have been done, would be a good process improvement and might address, might help to address your concern while still allowing the committees to do their work. And I have a few other comments. I appreciate the, appreciate the information on the trolley detection system. This is a small thing that will make a big difference to the History Museum and, or the, the folks that want to have the trolley run again. So thank you for the information on that. I look forward to seeing that in the budget. On the Eck House, I, I still am concerned about the state of that building and it being, it looking like there was a fire there right next to a playground. I would be interested in if we can make a budget amendment, or what we can do to make cosmetic and safety-type improvements to improve that situation faster than is currently contemplated. And then, also, thank you for the additional information on the Squawk multimodal. That has been a long time coming. I'm glad to see that there is dedicated funding for that, and that will make a big difference up on Squawk.
Thank you. Thank you. Deputy Council President?
Thank you. I actually just want to share a lot of praise tonight, so just give me a few minutes to do that, if you don't mind. First, first, just starting off, though, appreciate seeing the updates to the CIP project pages. I think that really captured our feedback. I think it feels more genuine, and I think that we struck the right balance there by having dual pages for both the projects. So, thank you for doing that. Also, thank you to the public for participating tonight, but also throughout the whole process. It's always great to hear about kind of the experiences of people in particular, people who live in areas who feel we're not covering enough in the CIP, the experience of sports communities that I've never really heard about. I was more of a soccer guy when I grew up here in Isiqua, so that's great to hear. So I really appreciate that. You know, just taking a step back, an incredible amount of work went into this document, I mean, even just since the last meeting that we had, so I want to acknowledge that and call that out as well. Public policy work, community engagement work, planning work, process work, lots and lots of questions from us, and lots and lots of answers from the administration. I think it may be the most effort we've ever put into a CIP update. I'm seeing some nods in agreement. It's a cost, really, that we have all decided is worth that cost, right? And it's not just for the benefit of this CIP. The return on investment is much greater than just this current CIP. Every CIP going forward will benefit from the policy, the process, and the staff work that we've invested in this. Every council going forward will benefit from it. Every budget rewrite will benefit from it. The community will benefit from it for decades. But I just want to make sure to call that out. We've created this new process that's more transparent, in my mind, more intentional, more mindful of equity, and we've also laid the groundwork for, you know, continued improvement, right, by documenting our goals and outcomes that we'll be able to come back to again in two years also, by listening to the feedback of our boards and commissions, by acknowledging that some elements of the plan may actually need to still be tweaked going into the future. The equity criteria is one of those that we, that we'll keep an eye on moving forward. And actually, that one in particular, we might need to even wait really long to see if actually we're scoring these in the right way, something to be mindful of. And of course, by continuing this tradition of having the Council President's letter attached with the CIP. You know, we were just at the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and one of my takeaways is that we do things really well here in Isiqua, at least compared to a lot of cities in the state. And I really do believe that communities are going to look at what we've done and say, that is the best CIP, the best CIP process I have ever seen for a 40,000-something community. I really think that we've gone above and beyond here, and it's not just for the CIP, it's for every CIP that comes after it. So, thank you for everyone who touched this update. I'm feeling really good about it. Yes, there are still opportunities for improvement, from policy, from planning, from putting things into the budget, and from thinking things in new ways, but what we got here is amazing. Want to make sure that we recognize that. Thanks.
Thanks, Deputy Council President. Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, compliments to the administration staff. You did answer the questions that came up on the meeting on June 12th very thoroughly, and made, at least myself, very at ease in terms of proving this, this evening. I wanted to touch on just a couple of things that we don't talk about very much. The exciting concept of cement replacement and pavement repair. No one ever does a, you know, a ribbon cutting or a, a big celebration for the replacement and repair that gets done on, on our infrastructure. And if we don't take care of it, then it leads to real expensive costs in the future. It's kind of like having a cavity, which is a pothole, which then turns into a root canal, which is a whole new pavement of a, of a big, long street. So, I appreciate the attention the administration is, is putting toward that, and I, I think Director Moon probably has something to do with that as well, as she's advocating for cement replacement and pavement repair. I also want to talk a little bit about the comments that are made about Little League. Full disclosure, I was a Little League coach this year, so I have a, an interest in, in seeing those fields develop well, and I appreciate the administration taking a long-term view in terms of getting those fields up to a standard where we can have practices when it's rainy and have games and tournaments when it's rainy and cloudy. We started practice in March, and it was 35 degrees and raining when we were out there, but we were on Central Pad One or Two out there that was, you know, turf, so we could, we could practice. The kids didn't like it, and, but, but we did it anyway. I, I think that when we look at parks, we kind of need to think about how we're creating opportunities for memories, you know. You know, my son, hey, remember that time you hit that double down line and you went around and scored the, and got that RBI? You know, we, we, we remember those things later. And by doing the parks well and doing the trails well, we're, we're creating memories for families that they're going to talk about for a long, long time, which has a big impact. Also, when we look at parks, I think Ms. Montano brought, brought up the fact that people come here for tournaments. And as many of you know, I'm the Chair of the LTAC Committee, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and we want to have visits from 50 miles or more, and we want to encourage people to stay in our hotels overnight. That money then gets turned into different projects, which create new overnight stays and create new travel to Isiqua, and it builds on itself. So, we're doing a pretty good job with our LTAC funds, but as was pointed out, we could have better fields that could attract tournaments, and they are expensive, as I can attest to personally going down to Centralia for a tournament. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Hunt for her continuous advocacy for the multimodal sidewalk project on Squawk Mountain. I live up there, and it's not ideal when, when my son wants to go from my house to his mother's house. It's a little bit dangerous sometimes, so I have to have him call me as soon as he gets there, and things like that. So I think from a public safety point of view, that's fantastic that we're looking at that. Finally, I just want to thank the, the administration for, again, for making Isiqua just a great place to live, work, and play. Deputy Council President Hall is correct that when we go to other conferences, people compliment Isiqua, both on our human services work that we're doing, the infrastructure work that we're doing, the parks and rec programs that we have. So, I hope that we will continue the great work that the administration and staff are doing in the future, and I look forward to seeing how this CIP, this plan for the future develops and how it might change along the way as we get additional funding or come up against opportunities for, for different thinking as we go forward as well. So, look forward to voting yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Anyone else? Okay, thanks. Looks like we did make the big roundtable. That's nice. I will repeat the motion. The motion before council is to approve Resolution Number 2023-11, adopting the Capital Improvement Plan for 2024 to 2029, including the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Six and oh, and Andrea, I really want to express my gratitude as well. You know, a lot of work went into the process this year. I think it caused some great conversations to happen, and I think we've had some great feedback from council as well. So, thank you, and all of your team. Wonderful job.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just amplify those comments a little bit. First of all, thank you to the council. This was a lot of additional work for you. It started in January. The, the process of looking at the criteria was an arduous one. It was also arduous for your boards and commissions. They all have lots on their plates, and we add this to that as well. And they all, I think, without exception, were very thoughtful in their work. And I think, as many of you pointed out, there have probably been more Isiqua residents involved in this capital improvement process than maybe ever before. And so, those many voices, many voices you often do not hear, their involvement, sharing with you priorities, I think, is a great achievement. This process was probably bigger than any city of 40,000 does. It probably was bigger than any city of 100,000 does. And I want to take a moment to really thank Andrea Schneider, the Deputy City Administrator, for her leadership in this process, working through the criteria. This criteria was not as simple as just looking online and stealing from the town down the street. We had to take a lot of different factors, the equity considerations, I think certainly, again, for a city our size in the United States, how that was measured into the Capital Improvement Program, I think was groundbreaking. Thank you, Andrea. The Department Directors of our operating departments, Emily Moon, Public Works, Dolly Wall for the Planning and Development, Jeff Watling, Autumn Monahan, of course, the Director of Administrative Services, all did excellent jobs, and all of their various staff members. Then Susie Moncel, our Budget Manager. As you noted tonight, Susie almost completely redid the document in the last 10 days, because the council wanted it redone, and wanted it to be, be more transparent, more complete, and Susie did all of that for you. So, Susie, on behalf of a grateful staff and a grateful council, thank you for your work. Or Robert Hamood, of course, our Finance Director, in dazzling you with every possible permutation of every possible funding source for every possible project. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we appreciate your patience. We appreciate the extra time that you've spent on this, and I think the document that we produced really is a community document. We often talk about wanting to hear from the community, and I think this document absolutely represents that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Quitz. Those are great comments. The next item of business tonight on regular business is AB 7879. This is the 2022 Storm and Surface Water Master Plan, and the ask before council this evening is to approve the resolution. I'd like to invite Senior Engineer Alan Quinn to make a presentation, and Alan, as you're moving up, has everybody met Alan through some sort, okay, Alan, maybe you have presented to some groups, but not all. So if you just want to introduce yourself to the council, that'd be great.
Sure. I guess first, make sure I, should I get the PowerPoint set up? So, are you going to, I just hit connect, or connect the, connect audio, or video, start video? Okay, great. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so yes, I'm Alan Quinn, Senior Stormwater Engineer for the, for the city, and tonight, I'd be, I'd like to present the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan Adoption Presentation. So, good evening, Mayor Polly and Council President Walsh, members of City Council. I also have Matt Ellis from Water, I mean, Utility Engineering Manager and Public Works Director, Emily Moon here as backup for support. So, without further ado, let's get started. So, this has been a, a project in, long in the making, going back almost four years now, the Storm and Surface Water Master Plan, and we now are at the finish line for the final plan adoption. Oh, sorry. Oh, my God. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, let's move along here. So, the purpose is just to give you a quick overview of the plan, and, and to seek a council adoption. Oh, okay. So, tonight's agenda, state, just want to go over these key things, key points, stakeholder engagement, and just, once again, discuss the contents of the final plan, and show you a, a map of all the CIP projects that were developed as part of this plan, plan implementation schedule, and then recommendation. Okay. Okay, stake- Okay. Okay, stakeholder engagement. So this, I think this slide is a good example of the extent at which we reached outreach and community engagement, going back, way back in December 2019, when we started this effort with the kickoff meeting, and then through the various councils, study sessions, boards, community meetings. We had virtual committee meetings. And then lastly, back in June of, September of last year, we had the Studies Council Plan Development Environmental Committee, where we presented the draft plan. And now here we are, you know, with the final adoption of the plan. Oh, shoot. Okay, I had to go back. Where's the reverse? Oh, there we go. Okay, so here's the contents of the plan. Basically, these are all the different components that we had to include in the plan. Before I get into this, I want to just briefly discuss really what the plan is. So it consists of two, two parts. One is the, really, an update to the 2002 Stormwater Management Plan, as well as complying with Department of Ecology's NPDS permit. So we have a, it's called the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System Permit, NPDS permit, which is how we regulate storm water in the state of Washington. And we're a Phase 2 community, and we also have to comply with their requirement to produce a SMAP, or Stormwater Management Action Plan. So it really is dealing with those two components. And really, a Stormwater Management Action Plan is this process where Ecology wants you to look at your watersheds and come up with, with all the issues, identify those issues, come up with solutions, and then really targeting retrofits. So the key there is develop some CIPs that really target retrofitting roadways for storm water treatment. So this plan includes CIPs that have, that meet some of that, some of those requirements. But in addition, we also wanted to develop CIPs that deal with not just water quality, but flooding, a lot of flood, flood control, as well as habitat restoration projects, because that's important for the city to, and we have, you know, this fish hatchery, and so that's a key that we want to address. So really, it consists of like existing conditions assessment, looking at the watersheds, what do we have, the current state, as you will, developing SMOs or Stormwater Management Options or projects, and then, and developing those projects, and then really, how are we gonna, how do we select them? And so we develop metrics, and we went to count, had gone to the various boards and study sessions to discuss those metrics, how we're going to prioritize these different projects, you know, assign them numerical values, and that was all discussed in previous, I said, meetings. Stakeholder engagement was a huge part of this effort. So I think we did a very robust outreach, so I'm pretty proud of that. Developing, and then once again, the final priority of Stormwaters and Management Options or capital projects. SMO is really the Ecology's terminology for capital projects for us. Develop an implementation schedule, develop the costs and what we're going to need, how we're going to fund this program, and then adaptive management, and then lastly, basin prioritization and the SMAP, which once again is targeting the Ecology's permit requirements. This map just represents all, kind of geographically, all the projects that we're proposing in the Stormwater and Surface Water Master Plan. And as you can see, they're pretty spread out. We tried to, some of the criteria was not just, you know, submitting these different metrics for water quality issues or flooding issues, but also trying to geographically represent the different, the six basins within the city so that we, you know, have a good mix throughout the city. So this gives you an idea where the, those projects are. Oh, I, okay. This is the, yeah, I forgot about that. So we're just, yeah, the animation. Okay, plan implementation schedules. So this shows you the, the project, so we have really, we had, we developed 10 CIP projects that were high priority projects. We actually looked at about 20 projects, and it's not that those other 10 are not going to be ever implemented, but we had to focus our efforts with limited funds on 10 high priority projects. And we came, and of those 10, these are the four that we've selected to go into the six-year CIP. So ST 045, 003, TR 022, and ST 049. And so these four projects, once again, are in the, in the top 10, and one, and the ones that we could, we felt make the most sense to implement in our six-year IP. And they hit the various phases. So next year, we're starting design on ST 045, Old Town Stormwater Improvements, and the Newport Way SR 900 and Southeast 54th Street improvements. And so really, part of what we were looking at is, and I think we alluded to in previous conversation with, the Councilmember Hunt mentioned, we try to work this, and we try to coordinate with other detail, with the other departments and making sure we're not, you know, we're taking advantage of other projects. And so the Newport Way SR 900, Southeast 54 is a good example of how we collaborated with transportation, and basically, we're going to piggyback on their project and retrofit, go above and beyond what they're doing for their requirements for storm water and do additional treatment. So, and then we have a Fish Passes project as well, because we want to make sure we, you know, that's our habitat component of this plan. So. And final slide, we recommend that council adopt resolution to, well, approve the resolution to adopt the 2022 Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. Any questions?
Councilmember Hunt? Thank you. There are a number of projects here that are good for fish habitat and salmon in particular. I wondered if you could speak to what improvements there are on, as far as what can be done for 6PPD, the tire dust, which was found to be a particularly bad pollutant for salmon that's in storm water.
Right. So, yeah, so there's still, you know, still research going on, trying to understand what, what technologies are out there that will work to treat 6PPDQ. And UW-Tacoma, and actually, my good time to bring it up, that, you know, we are working, we did a program with UW-Tacoma to evaluate three stormwater facilities within the city. So that was something that our environmental group looked at and worked with both Ecology and UW-Tacoma. And we looked at, evaluated three facilities, treatment facilities within the city, existing facilities, to see how effective they were in removing that particular pollutant. And the jury's still out, but right now, there are indications that we, the current technologies that we're out there, so that some of the facilities that were, that have been around for 10 to 15 years are, there's good removal efficiencies, but they still need to do more testing. And I think there's, we're considering working again with City of Bellevue and other jurisdictions to evaluate additional technologies, particularly amended compost as well. So we have these facilities, we have different types. There's these cartridge systems that we, we have. We have rain gardens, modular wetlands, all these different types of treatment systems that were, that are currently out there. We can swap those out with different types of media. And, and so, once we find a media that looks like it's pretty effective removing this contaminant, then we can, you know, swap it out with the current filter that we, filter systems that we have. So, so, yeah, there's still more, more work that needs to be done, but it's encouraging that our existing systems, facilities will take out 6PPDQ. So.
Thanks.
And I guess, and to say further that, yes, our projects, so that's where the retrofit comes in, right? So Ecology is looking at projects that will, where we don't have, currently have water quality treatment, but start prioritizing projects where we can, where we can treat storm water. And, and we actually have three projects now in our CIP. We have three, three grants from Ecology to do three separate water quality retrofit projects. So anyhow.
Any questions? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Mr. Quinn, could you go back to the last slide, one page back?
Sure.
I just had a question about ST 049, the Fish Passage Culvert Replacement Program. We received a briefing from WashDOT earlier this year talking about the culverts that were going to be replaced on I-90 and SR-900, and the traffic challenges it will have as a result of that work. This ST 049 is not that project, but it's the city culverts that we're dealing with.
Correct.
In this case. Can you give us an idea of how many there are and how it might disturb traffic, I guess, or have an impact on traffic?
So, so for this particular project, so for the city projects we're talking about, not the WashDOT projects.
Right.
Yeah. So, yeah, so we've identified in the master plan, you look in there, you can drill down to the, there's a map where we have all the identified fish passage. And that came from a variety of sources, Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, WashDOT. There's various databases out there. We were able to get all the information and at least know where we have known fish passage issues. And then we also, with the consultant OTAC, who helped develop the plan, we went out and actually field, verified some of these within the city and had, and actually scored them based on how, you know, what, how much habitat could be made available to fish if we remove them. So we, and so we came up with this SR 049, which is a project we can get started. So there's, in the plan is actually a CIP project for, it's called the Fish Passage Program. Well, this is, yeah, so there's a replacement program. I'm sorry, I got confused. So this is, yeah, this program is to go out and actually evaluate really more specifically what projects, what culverts would make the most sense to replace. We've actually identified further in the CIP, it's not in the six-year, but there is a specific project that we want to try to hit early that we know is an issue. And that's off, that's on SR 900. So anyhow, so I'm not sure if I answered your question, but, but, yeah, we're gonna, the program is to, is to do further evaluation and prioritize culvert replacements.
Matt, did you want to add some stuff?
Yeah. Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Sorry. Matt Ellis, Utility Engineering Manager. So Alan's right. So this is, what we're trying to do is have this a programmatic approach. So every four years, we'll be replacing a new culvert. So every, or every six years, there'll be a new culvert that will be added to the CIP list. One year is for the planning, one year is for design, one year is permitting, and in the final year, we do construction. So it's a programmatic approach to systematically tackle those culverts. Our first one, as Alan had mentioned, is on SR 900 at the southern limits of the city, where we found a high priority culvert that we need to relocate, replace.
Great. Thank you for that answer. I appreciate our efforts to maintain salmon habitat, and I'm glad that you're putting a plan in place that'll tackle culverts on a regular schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Are there any other questions? Because I am going to turn it over now to Committee Chair Hunt to see if the Planning Development Environment Committee has a recommendation for this item or some notes to share.
Yes. So we did recommend that this be adopted. We actually recommended, we reviewed this and recommended that it be adopted on consent, but that was September 7th of 2022. So because of the time elapsed, and because now we have also had the conversations with the CIP and other developments, we, it was put on regular business by the administration. And that also gives me an opportunity to review the committee's work and report back to council on that. So we, we, in our meeting in September of 2022, we, we liked the transparency improvements to the method that was used to, to assess and evaluate the projects. Similar to the CIP, there were process improvements to make it more transparent about how, how projects were being evaluated. We approved of the habitat-related, the salmon habitat-related projects, which are now in the CIP. And we actually had a conversation about understanding how projects get from the Stormwater Master Plan into the CIP, which we've now seen come full circle. And then we also wanted more visual aids, specifically maps, to look at how these projects were spaced out across the city. And so that was also provided this evening. So thank you. Thank you for that. And we were, we were supportive of the work that was done and recommended approval.
Great. Would you care to make a motion? Did you want to quit? Because you will have time to make comments after the motion, or do you want to do a question or something right now, Councilmember DeMichele?
Okay. I don't have it in front of me, so if you could please go to the slide with the last slide.
Oh, the very last slide?
Yeah.
Oh.
With the recommended motion. Yeah, thank you. I moved to approve Resolution Number 2023-12. Adopting the 2022 Storm and Surface Water Master Plan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and I'll go to Councilmember DeMichele.
So Councilmember Hunt answered one of my 101 questions, which is why is the 2022 plan that we're adopting in 2023? So I, I, my question or comment is, don't we usually put the year that we adopted on it? Why are we, why are we adopting a 2022 plan? And then I guess the follow-up comment would be, is it already being implemented, or is it going forward, will it be? So question, comment.
Well, yes, very, yeah, good question. Yeah, I think OTAC, we had this conversation, and I, and we decided that we, it would, we stick with 2022. I mean, that, we, but the bulk of the work was all done in 2022. It was really essentially nine, 85% completed in, in September. That was the draft, so the draft plan, but there were, there were still sections of the plan or chapters that were fairly small that we had to, still had to complete those. Yeah, I don't, we just decided to stick with the 2022.
The main, the main reason for the delay was Ecology had to review the plan after we threw all the, so then we're now at the point where Ecology has completed the review. We're ready for adoption.
And Matt, does it have anything to do with the review cycle? Are you keeping it in 2022 so that it gets reviewed or updated on a certain cycle? And do you show the adoption date on the front of the document?
That is a good question.
Yeah, the document doesn't have any, it's not, there's no adoption date on it.
Good evening, Emily Moon, Public Works Director. We are keeping it as a 22 plan because that's the plan that Ecology reviewed. So just to make sure there's consistency in understanding what they reviewed, what has been adopted. We're going to keep the title as such. We definitely can reflect the adoption date on the.
Other questions? Councilmember Hunt?
Well, I'll, I'll just note that it currently says April 2023, so perhaps that could be June 2023 on the front cover. And I was also going to mention that I know the, I had a conversation about why this, with, with City Administrator Bob Quitz earlier today, about why this was coming back from September. Yeah. And part of that was Ecology. So that is also my understanding that the Ecology review is why it says 2022, because that's what was reviewed and also one contributing factor to the timeline.
I mean, that was, that was a big part of it, that they had required their certain, they have reviewed various deliverables during the course of this whole development of the plan. And, yeah, the final draft plan they looked at. They have a certain period of time to review it. And, yeah, it just sort of, I have to wait for them to get their comments. So they reviewed it, they provided comments. We have to respond to those comments, make the changes. And so that took, you know, a little bit of time. And then there was, of course, the SEPA, had to go through SEPA as well. And we, before we could submit the SEPA checklist, we wanted to have a draft plan that Ecology was going to buy off on, and then submit that with a SEPA documentation to get that approval. So there's, yeah, that was sort of.
Thank you, Alan. That makes sense. I mean, the last thing we want to do is be talking about different plans, or think we're talking about different plans. Any other questions? Okay. Yep. Yep. Okay. Council President?
Yeah, I just wanted to hearken back to that September time period when we did do the review and look at, you know, some of the updates since then. But really, I understand this is storm and surface water. It's all the exciting stuff. But this really does take us forward. And I really appreciate the focus on, you know, how do you select things? Why does something come up in the ranks? And to someone who doesn't do a lot of necessarily storm and surface water reading, it was actually very comprehensible. And so I appreciate the time that was spent on this and how it's going to move us forward.
Any other council members? Okay. The motion before council is to approve Resolution Number 2023-12, adopting the 2022 Storm and Surface Water Master Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that carries unanimously, 6-0. And that carries unanimously, 6-0. Thank you very much, team. Job. The next item of business this evening is committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting on June 28th at 3:30 in the afternoon. And if you would like to get into the meeting, you can go to the Cascade Water Alliance website and go to meetings. The Cascade Water Alliance Public Affairs Meeting has been canceled, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. On June 21st, I attended the Regional Transit Committee while I was in beautiful downtown Spokane. The RTC discussed transit services in rural areas, the bus rapid transit plans for future routes, and the SAFE project. There was lots of discussion around rural transit services, with Metro presenting numerous alternative transit options and flex routes for consideration, including van programs, rideshares, and their community van program, which could also be of interest to us or to some of the nonprofits in Issaquah. For the SAFE project update, Mitchell Lloyd reported that their Transit Ambassador Program has made over 1,000 contacts with riders. This is a new program where they take drivers and other employees who are on desk duty and deploy them to transit centers and bus stops where they help people navigate the system and answer questions. And so it's something that they're trying out to make the ride a little bit more comfortable and better for people, and they're feeling very good about this initial success. The other part of the SAFE program that they're piloting is the Behavioral Health Specialist private pilot program. And that, with only four behavioral specialists in the field, has made over 500 contacts in the first four months. And they put numerous people in contact with resources. I did make a request that Metro provide a database or other method where we can view the data and also measure the data against stated goals. You can't tell very much from the base numbers, but they could do better to put those numbers into context for us. So that was the discussion. It was a lively meeting, and we'll be back again next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Planning Development and Environment Committee met on June 6th. However, I have already covered both items. We had amendments to Title 18 regarding diversity of housing, which I reported on earlier because it was on consent. And we had ID 1320, the 2024 to 2029 capital improvement plan, which was part of our capital improvement discussion. There will be no meeting in July of the Planning Development and Environment Committee, and the next meeting of that committee will be August 1st.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The council's Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on June 13th, and there were two items on the agenda, ID 1353, the Transit Study Gap Analysis. And we received an update on the current state of Metro and sound transit. As I think many of us know, Metro is experiencing some staffing shortages and corresponding issues. Consequently, Metro will be suspending the 214, 216, and 217 routes to Issaquah and encouraging riders to use parallel routes, the 554, the 269, and the 218, or find alternate means. So in addition to the update from Metro, we were asked to provide guidance on two questions. One was around providing bus stop amenities for high priority stops if Metro was not going to. The committee was mixed in our response to that. So the administration is factoring that into the go-forward plan. And then there was a question around where meaningful improvements could be made to enhance the speed and reliability of transit. Do we consider making those? And the committee was generally supportive of moving forward with those improvements. Committee also got an update on ID 1414, the street standards. There are two groups of standards that are being looked at. Some of them are administrative in nature, and these are things consistent with the WashDOT design material, the IMC Landscape and Tree Preservation, and Issaquah Comprehensive Plan. There are also other areas that the council will need to take action on, and those are related to retaining wall design standards, street typical sections, and landscape exceptions. The standards will be coming back to the council on July 10th for a public hearing. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. As stated earlier, Councilmember Maritz has an excused absence, so we'll move to Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors will meet next on Thursday, July 13th at 4:00 PM at our headquarters on Newport Way. No agenda for that yet, but we will have another meeting before that board meeting, so I'll keep you in the loop. I did want to mention, I had previously mentioned, or we had previously, previously mentioned back in May that Eastside Fire and Rescue had responded to an RFP for a contract for services with the City of Mercer Island. And if you haven't already heard, last week, they officially selected EFER as their regional fire services, or for their regional fire services. So we'll keep you in the loop as the negotiations for all of that begin to unfold. And, yeah, good news for the agency and, yeah, good stuff. So that concludes my report.
Thanks. Council President?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, on June 15th, Councilmember Joe and I attended an in-person meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee. Technically, it was hybrid, but we went in person to PSRC in Seattle. So that was fun. One, we had a, quite an interesting conversation about the potential future of that committee and what its charter is. It's kind of coming down to that first five-year point and evaluating, you know, looking deep introspectively on, are we getting the job done? Are we limiting ourselves? Could we be doing more? So talking about that and membership. So we're going to continue those conversations. And then we're also looking ahead at, you know, everybody's going to have their comprehensive plans. One of the things that the Affordable Housing Committee was tasked with was, hey, how do we evaluate and kind of compare whether or not jurisdictions are making progress toward our targeted housing needs? And so we were evaluating different methods of doing that, whether it's giving each city a grade on their comprehensive plan and then also their ability to implement those, or whether we might do more of a, you know, full circle, half circle, no circle for different elements. So we'll continue having that conversation, which I think will be interesting for us as we look at our comprehensive plan, whether it meets those needs, and then also whether we apply the policies into code. And then I will be attending the Growth Management Policy Board on July 6th. At this point, no agenda has been released, but I will keep everybody in the loop. That concludes my report.
Thank you. So for the mayor's report tonight, there will be an executive session this evening to discuss pending potential litigation for RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI. And the item is expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in the open session. The next item of business right now is good of the order, and I have a few upcoming council meetings, but does anybody else have any items they want to share? Councilmember Joe?
Well, I missed the meeting on June 12th, so I guess I'm making it up by talking a lot tonight. My apologies. Just a compliment to the city for sponsoring the Juneteenth event. I know the mayor spoke, and it was a great event that was community-driven, and I hope that it will continue as a celebration in the future. Also, on the 24th of June, we had the Garage Pride Event at the Community Center Lawn, and I want to thank the city for giving us a forum and a platform to have that event. I know that President Lindsay Walsh gave some nice comments during the welcome introduction. And we also appreciate that the city put the stage up a little bit earlier than they had in past years. That was a great asset for the students there to be able to get on stage and do their music performances. And I thought it was just a great event overall, and people were very pleased by both the turnout and the enthusiasm. So thank you to the city.
Thanks, Councilmember. Any other items? Deputy Council President?
Yeah, really quick, just a reminder to council that before our next council meeting on Monday, July 10th, we'll be meeting in my old neck of the woods, South Cove, for the ribbon cutting for Blackberry Park, which is newly finished, and the lawn is officially green, too. So we'll be meeting at 5:30 to do that ribbon cutting and then coming back for our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. So I hope to see you all there.
Councilmember DeMichele?
I just wanted to share something that some of us heard, but not all of us, and that was at the AWC conference. The, I believe the head of the Spokane Office for the Department of Commerce was, announced that he's an Issaquah, he was born and raised in Issaquah. And then he gave this wonderful compliment saying that Issaquah had really done a great job on preserving its historic character in the midst of a lot of growth. It was a great compliment, completely unsolicited, and we all applauded.
Everybody thought we did solicit it, but we did not. But there is a video out there somewhere. Anything else for good of the order? I did want to share as well that at these conferences, there are also different seminars on topics that are really relevant to council members and mayors. This was one of the authors that ran a seminar, but we're going to be putting these copies of the books in what we're going to call the council library. So anybody who wants to borrow it, it's great. I have another one that we actually won by a lottery about the effect of AI on misinformation and how we can all sort of up our game in being able to assess whether or not something is, we are being misinformed. And so we also have a copy of that as well. And it was a great event. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember DeMichele.
I would just, did we get the book from the last session? And I believe it had something to do with BS. Okay.
Yeah, the one I didn't say on camera? Yes. We have that book. We have that book and.
Whatever that stands for.
It's going up in the, it'll go in council libraries. So I'll have Regina identify a little shelf, and there's a few others that I've been given over the years from different conferences, and I'm just going to stick them all out there because I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that was a great presentation.
It was very good. A little scary. So here are a couple of notes on upcoming meetings. Due to the Fourth of July holiday, the city council meetings in July will be held the second and fourth Monday of the month. That will be on July 10th and 24th. Both meetings have a special event beforehand. As Deputy Council President said, on July 10th, it is the Blackberry Park Neighborhood Celebration at 5:30. I will also be issuing the Parks and Community Services Month Proclamation at that event at Blackberry Park, and it will be noticed as a special meeting so that all council members can attend. On Monday, July 10th, the city council meeting at 7:00 PM, the regular council, sorry, anticipated agenda items include the informational update on the Salary Commission findings and the public hearing on the street standards. Monday, July 24th, city council meeting, meeting will be preceded by dinner and a social gathering outdoors behind City Hall ordering Veterans Memorial Field. The city council will be joined by the city's Hall of Fame recipients and city leadership team. And for the regular meeting, anticipated agenda items include the 2024 budget priorities for transportation and police. So this last item of business we have this evening, this evening is our executive session, and the city council will now recess into executive session to discuss pending potential litigation for RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI. And the items are expected to take approximately 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. So please note that executive sessions are closed to the public, and we will now recess into executive session at 8:43 PM. I asked the city clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting, and anyone who's not a part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting room. And you're welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened. So, city clerk?